Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular council meeting of Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. Let the record show that all councilors are present tonight. No adds and deletes. Could I have approval of the agenda? Wishes of the council.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Approve the minutes. Approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting of July 5th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of July 5th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. One, approve accounts payable dated 7/14/2023, checks number 1-75103 through 1-75197 in the amount of $1,365,201.36. Approve the city payroll for the pay period ending 6/30/2023. Checks number 1-68765 through 1-68770 in the amount of $567,248.88. Three, authorize the hire of Paul Kelly for the temporary library aide position pending pre-employment contingencies. Four, authorize the hire of Elena Amosparra for the temporary library aide position pending pre-employment contingencies. Five, acknowledge the resignations of Daniel Schneidel, library aide effective June 30th, 2023. Six, authorize the posting of a full-time skilled labor physician in the Streets and Elles Department. Seven, acknowledge the retirement of John Spoor, Public Works Superintendent effective September 8th, 2023. Number eight, acknowledge the retirement of Robert Smith, automated truck driver with the sanitation department, effective August 14th, 2023. Nine, approve the hire of Alyssa Garcia for the part-time PBA position within the Hibbing Police Department, pending pre-employment contingencies. Ten, approve the hire of Kristen Sunval within the City Service Department as youth golf instructor effective June 20th, 2023. Eleven, acknowledge the resignation of Reed Holam, Task Force Officer at the Hibbing Police Department, effective July 23rd, 2023. Twelve, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Hibbing's 130th Birthday Celebration and Hall of Service and Achievement Induction on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM on the front lawn of City Hall. Thirteen, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the ribbon cutting and open house for I Clinic North on Friday, August 25th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, at 1311 East 34th Street in Hibbing. Fourteen, set the budget working session for 7:26, 8:09, 8:23, and 8:30, all beginning at 5:00 PM. Fifteen, set the next regular Hibbing City Council Meeting for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM at City Hall in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Sixteen, set the Hibbing City Council Workshop for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council Meeting at City Hall in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. There's one item on June 21st, 2023 agenda. It's just that we had set the Joint Airport Authority Meeting with the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority for Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the conference room of the Administrative Office of the Range Regional Airport. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support?
Support.
Support from Councilor Swyberger? Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just want to let you know that on number fourteen, where we're setting the budget working sessions, that will be held in this, in the council chamber.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knows.
So note that our budget sessions will be in the council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you.
Candy? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We have one for public forum, and that is Mr. Whiteside. Let it be known, Tom, five minutes is generally what we allot, and no decisions can be made with the council.
Yep. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. My name is Tom Whiteside. I just had a question about the library board. I don't believe that we have a library board in place. And it's my understanding that there's, a state statute requires that we have to have a library board in place. And I think we're supposed to, I think we have a seven-member board, or is what it's supposed to be? Um, I just wanted an update on, are we moving forward on trying to get applicants for that? And also, what sort of timeline we have for filling that library board positions?
Well, what I'm gonna do is, Candy, I'm gonna turn it over to you because she takes in the nominations, and I think boards are important to me. And I know it's one thing that I, uh, had ran on as running for mayor was, get all our boards back in place. And, uh, so Candy, I'll let you speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and city councilors. Tom, um, we've been putting the application process, the, um, what boards are available and what positions, since actually last, um, October. Um, we now have, I think we have four people who have put in for the library board. So I'll be running it again, just to make sure, you know, trying to catch people who maybe missed it in previous posts. We're also gonna put it on the, um, Facebook and our website. Um, and so hopefully, um, tonight we have two of our boards on the, um, and commissions on our agenda. And so hopefully, within the next month, that would be great to get, you know, that one filled. We still have a few others, so we don't wanna discount those, but, um, we are working at filling all of them.
How long are you taking the applications from? Because I think that the board has been not filled for an extended period of time. So how far back are you? Like, have, do we only have four applications in the last, like, certain time period, or?
Yeah, so, those actually go back through '22. And, um, what I can do is, people who've shown interest, I'll definitely reach back out to them. Um, now knowing we're a couple steps closer with having that many.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate you coming forward. All right, uh, we'll move on to 2022 Audit Presentation by ABDO. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Bonnie Schwigger. I'm a Senior Audit Manager with ABDO. And we are in the process of finalizing the 2022 Financial Statement Audit. You have a draft copy of our report in front of you. And I'm gonna be going through our audit presentation, which looks like this on the front cover here. And for members of the audience, there are copies up here provided by the Finance Department. If anyone wants to follow along, they can come up and get those copies. And if you have any questions as I'm going through this, please feel free to stop me. I'll try to be brief in my remarks and leave plenty of time for questions. So I'm gonna start on page three of the presentation, uh, that has audit results at the top. And I'm gonna give you an overview of our, uh, technical information for the audit. And so for the audit, you are required to have an audit performed and opinion issued by an independent audit firm or the Office of the State Auditor, that is a state statute. And that's one purpose of the audit, is to fulfill that requirement. It's also really important that you have audited financial statements, uh, for your bondholders and your residents, so that people can know how you're financially doing and be able to put trust in your, uh, Finance Department and also your financial statements. And we do plan to issue a clean or unmodified opinion, consistent with what you've received in the past. And that's exactly what you're looking for. That means that we were able to perform audit with any significant issues and obtain all of our audit evidence. We also do review your internal controls, and we did not note any, uh, significant issues with your processes or your financial controls that you have in place. Your audit also involves a review of legal, legal compliance with state statutes. You have to comply with a lot of different state statutes, and we didn't find any issues there. This year, you were also subject to a really fun federal single audit. That was an additional requirement because you spent over a certain dollar amount in federal funds. And so we had to do some testing on a federal level there. And we didn't note any issues with the, with the federal compliance requirements either. I'm gonna turn to the next page now, and just go over the one finding that we have disclosed in the report. And this is nothing new, and it's something that's very common in audit reports for cities of your size. And so we do have an internal control, uh, finding in there, really just a disclosure, that as your auditors, we do prepare your financial statements, but they are the responsibility of management. Nothing to be concerned about, but just understand that, uh, financial statements are the responsibility of the city. And we do that as a third-party, uh, service, as preparing those, as we do for about eighty percent of our clients. Okay, I'm gonna switch to the next page and go through the general fund, fund balances. And so we're gonna touch on some of the financial metrics for the past few years here. And we'll start with the general fund. So the general fund is the main operating fund of the city. That's where most of your everyday transactions flow through. And this chart on page five of the presentation shows you how much you have in your reserves to cover your operating budget. So for the past three years, it's been a very consistent reserve balance. And you can see there are not a ton of changes from where you were sitting last year. And you are over the city's fund balance policy of fifty to sixty-five percent. So one thing to consider as you move forward with your, with your budget process and any long-term planning, is just think really, um, hard about, what's the best use of that fund balance reserve? Do you have a lot of room there over your general fund policy? On the next page is a look at your budget-to-actual statement for 2022. So you can see there what you had planned for the year with your final budget versus where you had ended up. And so you did have some significant budget variances this year, mostly due to some supply chain issues. We saw in a lot of the cities that we work with that it was really hard to get certain pieces of equipment or get certain projects completed. And so we're seeing a lot of expenditure variances this year, uh, within budgets, just because that, some of those things just weren't able to happen, and will be shifted into the next year. But overall, your general fund balance did increase about nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the year before. And then next is a couple of charts that show you your revenues and then spending within the general fund. And so you can see, how is your general fund funded? It's mostly through your taxes, grants from state, county, and local funds. And then there's a small section that's charges for services coming in for, uh, building permits, reimbursements, things like that. And then you can also see what your spending is and what those departments have looked like over the past three years. And so your largest department there is that public safety, followed by public works. Everything is fairly consistent with where it had been in the past. The miscellaneous category, I just want to point out, is a cemetery, cemetery, some transportation there. Okay, and then switching away from the general fund is a look at some special revenue funds. So these aren't talked about as much, and so we just like to kind of show what those special revenue funds are. Um, there's a library fund, housing incentive, small cities development, and then also revolving loan fund. And so most of these funds are committed for use and can only be spent on those specific purposes, so just not available for everyday spending. And then on the next page is your capital project funds. And so the city puts a lot of the main, major capital project activity into separate funds. One new fund this year is an urban redevelopment fund. And then you can see there are some of the other activity, uh, for the year. And so you have some really strong capital project fund balances. And then next is a look at your debt service funds. And so with your debt service funds, it's just important to know when is that debt going to fall off? And I am on page ten of the, of the report here. And so for the debt service funds, you have a, a pretty steady debt service balance until 2030, in which you have some room that frees up within your debt service obligations. And then you can see a little bit more falls off in 2031. This does not include any debt that will be issued in the future. It's only debt that existed as of 2022. So next I'm gonna cut, touch on the utility funds that you have. So on slide eleven here, you can see, um, the operating chart on the top. And then there's also a cash chart on the bottom. And so for operations, what you really want to see is a gap, or at least a really close balance between your operating receipts and then the cost that you're paying out. And so within the sewer fund, you have some debt that you're supporting with receipts. And then you have your operating costs as well. And so you can see for the past four years, you've been able to support those operations with the receipts that are coming in and the debt payments, and so that's really great. And then on the bottom chart is a look at your cash balances. And so you have some cash that's set away for, um, retirement obligations, that designated for OPEB fund. And then you have some unrestricted cash in there. And so those two combined are able to meet that minimum target balance that we have, that black line going across that chart. And then next is the garbage and refuse collection fund. And so again, you can see here that on the top chart, your operating receipts and your operating costs, um, look really good. There's a sufficient gap between the two to allow you to maintain a steady cash balance, which you can see on the bottom there, the cash balance there is, looks really healthy. And then last for the utility funds is the memorial building fund. And so here, there's a, um, the operating receipts and the operating cost comparison there, and the cash balance is being built up the last, um, in this year. But not a lot of activity flows through there, and so just really small balances this year. And then just very briefly, I want to point out the Economic Development Authority Funds. And so there is, um, some restricted funds within the EDA. And you can see those balances there and what they can be used for. And then on the next chart is a look at your total cash and investments by type. And so there's a lot of different things that happen within the city. And this chart just helps illustrate that you have one main cash balance and some investments. And they're split out over all of these different areas. And this chart just shows you kind of where is your main, uh, cash sitting? And that's within the general fund, but then there's some restricted and committed funds in other areas. I have one more cash chart on the next, on the next page that shows your retirement liability. And then what that looks like compared to the cash that you have set aside for it. And this is a very common view, nothing to be concerned about. Uh, it's good that you have those, some of those cash reserves in place to pay out that retirement liability. Most cities would never have this one-hundred-percent funded. And so this is a, um, it looks skewed, the liability's really high, cash balance is smaller than that, but that's okay. You're never gonna have as much cash as that liability would indicate. Okay, and then I have a couple of, of performance indicators to show you. And so what we've done is we've compiled some information from other cities in the state, just to give you a look at taxes, debt, and then some, um, operating expenditure information. And so the first two charts looks at your tax rate and then also your tax per capita. And so we've taken some cities, um, that are nearby to you guys, and then also Class III cities, which is cities of population between twenty-five-hundred and, uh, I'm sorry, ten-thousand and twenty-five-thousand in population there. And then you can see you guys are the black line that kind of run across those comparisons and for 2019 through 2021. And then you can see the most recent year, uh, for you guys is there as well. And so for the tax rate, you're right, kind of in line, um, in line there. And then also the taxes per capita with those Class III cities in St. Louis County. And then on the next page is some debt per capita information. And you guys are relatively low compared to some of these, uh, peer groups that we have included in here. And I'll just point out that every city is definitely different, right? So your guys' projects and needs are a lot different than other cities in, in your county and also cities in that population group. And so we're providing this just as a reference. It can be difficult to do that comparison one-to-one. Every city is a little bit different. And then after the debt information is just some spending information, uh, current expenditures, spending, and then also capital expenditures. And this is for non-utility funds. And so this is looking at, uh, just those governmental operations, not considering the sewer or the garbage fund or the memorial. And then we have one last chart that looks at the sewer fund debt service coverage. And so that's just looking at, in your sewer fund, how, um, how healthy is that fund? And how able is it to pay back that debt service? And the goal there is to have a percentage over one-hundred percent. And so, and so you are hitting that goal. And, and I would say there's nothing to worry about there with that dip this year. Um, as long as you're over that one-hundred-percent coverage, that's, that's a good metric. And we do have our contact information listed on the last slide. If you ever have any questions, I would love to hear from you guys. You can reach out to us at any time. If you have any questions and any information or would like me to go back, uh, to the beginning of the presentation, touch on any of those slides, I could, I would love to do that as well.
Bonnie, I thank you. Uh, so I'll open it to the council for any questions, Bonnie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, just a quick question here. Does the, um, fund balance reserve have any impact on the city's bond rating?
It does have an impact on the bond rating. Um, bond rating companies, they, they have their own kind of metrics that they use a lot of the time to say what they want you to be at, but they do also look at your policy and the history and what your next budget is. And so that does have an impact. And, um, and we generally recommend you don't want to go below your policy, right? So the healthier the better, but they also want to see, you know, what is your plan for your fund balance? Um, and what does that long-term look like?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Bonnie, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to work with the city. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, complete, we'll move on to Department Committee Reports. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Green.
Mayor and council, this is a request for the city Hibbing to make application and accept funds for the residential demolition. Uh, it's for one, on, on the resolution, there's a error. It says six structures, but there's, uh, two structures on the property. And this was a condemnation. It's been vacant, no owner. Uh, so we do have a court order for demolition, and the grant would come to the city to do that.
Okay. So looking for resolution, uh, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor James Bayless. I didn't know if it was just me or you. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to City Engineer, Mr. Story.
Uh, Mayor, council, I'm asking to approve Resolution 23-07-09 to apply for IRR funding for the sanitary sewer lining project. The grant application will be in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, hearing for resolution for infrastructure grant, Bonnie? Uh, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Councilor Hoffman-Sockman makes a motion? Support?
Support.
Approved by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Finance Director, Ms. Muller.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In item A, I'm offering Resolution 23-07-10, authorizing execution of the agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit services. This resolution is required as part of our grant applications for MINDOT's operating and capital grants. The operating grant application is due at the end of July. So I'm asking for council to authorize a resolution, authorizing the city to execute an agreement with the state of Minnesota to provide public transit services.
Very good. Hearing, uh, the resolution for transit services, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. B.
Um, in item B, our postage machine lease is about to expire. So the new lease that I'm proposing would be for sixty-three months. And the annual increase is for approximately fifty dollars per year for the new machine. This agreement would also include the maintenance component of the, of the lease, which is currently separate in a different agreement. And so that'll lock in the maintenance costs for the term of the lease. Um, and that usually had an annual inflator of around ten percent per year. So I'm asking for City Council to approve the new lease for the postage machine.
All right, so looking for support for lease agreement for postage machine, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Counselor.
Thank you. Sheena, do we, um, the previous, um, postage machine, were we leasing that as well, or?
Yes, we were.
So this is probably an upgrade and everything, then?
Yep, it's a very similar machine. Um, it's gonna be new, obviously. The old one is getting to be pretty worn out. And then it's also got a better screen. Uh, they said it's got a colored screen instead of black and white, so it's easier to see.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Yep, thank you.
We'll move on to number four, Community Development Director, Betsy Alavanti.
Resolution number 230711, to make application to and accept funds from the IRR's Commercial Redevelopment Grant Fund for the demolition of the former KFC site to make way for the new Splash Express Hibbing LLC car wash. Um, we have been working with this, uh, project over the past few months through both Planning and Zoning Commission with, um, our building official, Pat Green, and our planning administrator. And then, um, the city administrator, Przydyski, and myself have chatted with this individual as well, um, working with them to get plans, understand what the investment is gonna be. Um, and then, um, also how, how we as a city could, um, work with them and collaborate best in that particular corridor to ensure that the process of this development is as smooth as possible. Um, so to that end, we have also brought in the Public Utilities Commission to be a part of those discussions. Um, and they have just since, um, submitted their initial plans to us for this portion of the project. Um, they've submitted more, um, in-depth plans to our building official. But now I have some sources and uses and those sorts of things. And, um, to take down this particular site and get the site ready for this development would be one thing that they would ask the city to contribute, um, at working with the IRR and the funding available there.
Very good. So you're looking for resolution for funding for demolition?
Yes.
For the old KFC. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. B.
All right, my second item is Resolution 230712, to make application to and accept funds from the IRR's Commercial Redevelopment Grant Funding for the next phase of renovations at the Red Rock Hotel located at 1402 Howard Street in Hibbing. Um, this strategic initiative is High Priority Goal Number Two from the City Council's Strategic Planning Session, to implement a plan and program to revitalize Howard Street. Um, the individual purchase, Sean Bodanapu of Midwest Partners, purchased this property in August of 2021. And over the past two years has put significant investment into, um, redevelopment of this property at this point. We have secured a hundred thousand in the past of IRR demolition funding for him. Um, and at this time, there has been no other investment, um, on the portion of the city. So however, this project is very extensive. Um, I, we've arranged, um, in the past for a tour for the City Council to go and see the property and ask the property owners some questions and things like that to see progress. He is always willing to, um, invite you back in for another such tour if you so desire. Um, and right now, he has made some significant panel upgrades to electrical, plumbing, all of the things that are buried inside the walls. Um, but we're required in order to get this property to, um, back online and, and renting rooms in the city of Hibbing. So, um, he's asked for us to partner in this way again at this time. And so I'm asking for that resolution of support tonight.
Very good. So, looking for support for resolution for the Red Rock Hotel, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil? Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, just waiting. Uh, Betsy, does there any kind of definitive timeline, like a target date of, uh, opening yet?
Um, thank you for the question, Councilor Whitney. At this time, he, I think it's a little bit of a moving target, but he really does have in his, um, financial projections at this point to open up the original fifty rooms by the end of 2023 is his intent. So they may open sooner based on, um, my, the last tour. They were in there doing sheet rock and those sorts of things. Um, but I didn't see furniture and fixtures in there at this time. So his, his intent was fall, but I'm gonna hedge my bets and say hopefully by the end of 2023.
And there's, uh, plans for a restaurant bar again, in with the old grandmas?
There absolutely is. Yes, he has fully gutted that location as well and has kind of reshifted how the room is laid out to do, um, staging for live entertainment and things. The bar will be facing a different location. Um, there will be a, a different flow to the dining room. There will be a different flow to the dining room and to the kitchen and all of those sorts of things. And he has plans and all of those drawn up architecturally already. But I think that that won't be online by the end of this year based on the status of where that project, part of the project is.
Okay, thank you.
Wishes of the council.
You have a motion in session?
Well, yes. We had a motion, that was discussion, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Excellent. All right, so then I'd like to offer resolution twenty-three oh seven thirteen, to make application to the I triple R's commercial redevelopment funding for building renovations at nineteen twenty-fourth Avenue East in Hibbing. Again, this is around that high priority goal number two to implement a plan and program to revitalize the Howard Street district. Mr. Hanson purchased the building at nineteen twenty-fourth Avenue East and plans to renovate the commercial space to rent out to the Hibbing Elks Lodge. These demolition grant funds will assist him with renovating this space substantially from the current used to allow for the new tenant to have this new home. These renovations will also revitalize a substandard building in the downtown district to enhance and preserve the structure for years to come. So at this time, I'd ask if you'd approve that resolution as well.
Very good, hearing what Ms. Olivanti had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Schweiger. Is that?
It's Fossil.
I'm sorry, Councilor Fossil. Approved by Councilor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. D.
Okay. This one is resolution number twenty-three oh seven fourteen, to make application to and accept funds from the I triple R's commercial redevelopment grant funding for the Freeman Building renovations at one twelve East Howard Street in Hibbing. So this gentleman, Mr. Freeman, purchased the building, it was the old Carpet Plaza, at one twelve Howard Street East and plans to renovate the commercial and residential spaces. These demolition funds will assist him with renovating this substandard building to enhance and preserve the structure for years to come. He intends to install sort of entertainment type business in the main level and then have an arcade style business in the lower level. He has been working on that with our building official, Mr. Green, so he is well aware of which codes need to come into compliance and those sorts of things. And having some demolition funds on the front side to remove some of the parts of the building that don't necessarily suit the new purpose. And then also, he has applied for business energy retrofit from the AEOAs program that's funded by the I triple R and the downtown business rehab program as well. And I know he's going to be talking to the EDA potentially about a loan in a subsequent date. So he's really investing quite significant funds into this building to get it back online and bring a vibrant business into our downtown. It's really going to go well also with the work that the Sammy's Pizza location is doing right next to this. They've got two locations and they bought the third and in March of this year, the city council approved going after some funding for that one as well. So this entire block will see a revitalization with these two business owners doing this significant investment into that portion.
Thank you for that update. Wishes of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. E.
All right, so this is my final resolution tonight, twenty-three oh seven fifteen, to accept the Cipola Development Agreement and release of all claims. This has come before the city council in the past for negotiation in closed session with our attorney, Mr. Borland. And Andy and I have worked on this particular agreement, both of them, that were in your packet tonight, very closely to work through this process. So the city council and the EDA have worked closely with Dr. Cipola to assist with the development of his new eye clinic in Hibbing. Through this partnership, Dr. Cipola has secured public investment of nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twelve cents to various Minnesota Department of Economic Employment and I triple R grants and HEITA loans. Additionally, Dr. Cipola has requested that the city provide an additional thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twelve cents as the local match for the Deed Brownfield Grant that was secured by the city with our deputy administrators' assistance in 2022, I believe Candy, for this project. HEITA referred this request to the city council for action without recommendation at the time it was sent over. So the fiscal impact would be up to thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twelve cents from the undesignated fund balance of the city. And that would be approved upon Dr. Cipola furnishing appropriate receipts for the redevelopment grant that qualify under the guidelines for the Deed Brownfield Grant for the local match portion identified in that grant contract that we signed with Deed in 2022.
Very good, I appreciate the update. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweiger.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Fossil. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
City service director, Mr. Rowa.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Before you tonight, I have a professional service agreement with SEH to take over the site visits up at the Mindview and additional design and plans for site grading up at Mindview. The first part of it would be the construction site visits. We're kind of in a unique situation where we have Lecito is our designer drafter on the project and we have SEH as the architect and engineer on record. In the original agreement that the city had with Lecito, Lecito was responsible for site visits during construction. When we get up there and construction managers have questions and things, Lecito isn't able to answer those questions, so everything gets routed to SEH anyway. So this would be a change to have SEH take over those site visits and Lecito has agreed to reduce their fees by the amount that SEH would charge for those site visits in the change of the agreement. That's the first part. Second part, now that the buildings are kind of taking shape and everything, we see what's going on up there and we know there's going to be additional site grading needed and additional walkways needed up there. So the second part of this agreement would be for SEH to move forward with those designs of the additional grading and walkway paths and also a couple ADA accessible parking spaces. So this is not a change order to the project, this is a separate agreement, so.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Rowa had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Approved by Councilor Whitney. Any other discussion? Nick, I'd like to just know where are we at with the project at this point?
Yeah, I was just up there yesterday and the smaller of the two buildings is really starting to take shape. They are starting to tip up walls, they have everything basically framed in on the second building, the smaller one. All the steel is in place. The larger building, they're going to start putting floor joists down this week as well. But yeah, it's moving quick now that they got the walls kind of tipped up. That second smaller building, they hope to have totally watertight by the end of the week, it was their goal. This might set them back a little bit, but they're moving quick. The biggest delay is going to be on the siding of the building. That won't even be in until mid-September. So yeah, they're going to get everything buttoned up as much as they can, but the siding is actually coming from across the pond in Germany and it'll be a little while on that, so. But all the steel is up and yeah, they're moving pretty well, so.
Very good, all in favor, say aye.
You can motion.
Oh, did I make?
We have, no, we don't have a motion. We have a motion. Yep, and Councilor Swinman's staff.
Yep.
And Chris, Councilor Whitney.
Yes, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought there was one. I just screwed up on that one.
We'll move on to city administrator, Frank Przynski.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. First thing from my office this evening is to authorize a sewer credit for Richard Moyer over on Twenty-second in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirteen cents. I did have some supporting documentation, it does fit under our current policy. Dave Heard down in our wastewater treatment plant has signed off on it, I've signed off on it. This is an expense that's over the approved limit for me to sign off on, so it does take city council approval to do it. We have, again, checked into the policy, it does fit, so I would ask that you approve that.
Okay, we're looking for support for sewer credit for Richard Moyer. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. B.
The second thing, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, is a letter of support for the Blatnik Bridge. So there's a group called the Transportation Alliance, they're located in St. Paul, they're asking for letters of support for funding to rebuild the Blatnik Bridge in between Duluth and Superior. Did a little background checking on this group, it is supported, well-supported by cities, counties, and engineering firms. I have crafted, actually, I totally stole their template, but I have a letter in here, hopefully had a chance to read it, but I would support it and hopefully the city council would too, so.
They did, just to add to that, they did send an updated letter, which I forwarded to you, Candy.
I thought it was the same.
Okay.
Okay, and it could be the same, but they, it came through to me today, so I moved it forward to you. But definitely that bridge is huge for our economy, for this Arrowhead region and
And we'll take a second look at that, if there's an edited version, it won't change the substance likely, there'll be some edits, but we'll make the appropriate edits instead.
Very good, so wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweiger.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you. Ministers report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, so we've already kind of talked a little bit about our joint meeting coming up on August second with the Public Utility Commission. I want to ask Andy a quick question on that, so we approved the next city council meeting, we approved the next workshop, but remember, we'll be doing a capital investment tour as part of that joint meeting. Do we need to jump through any additional hoops if we take that joint meeting on the road to like the water treatment plant? Or is this meeting the current requirement under open meeting?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe you're fine, as long as the thing starts here, you know, if they happen to go out there for the tour, but you've noticed that there could be a joint meeting that night, but I think you're fine with respect to inviting an open meeting.
Okay, so we should be covered there and for our residents, it's a joint meeting with that capital investment tour component added to it. So final thing on that, we will be getting a packet out to the city council, we're still working on some of the logistics and some of the content, so we will have a packet for you to review. With that, I would yield and turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to bids and quotes. First up, city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from Carquest for the purchase of two hundred feet of hydraulic hose and mail-in connectors. This is to clean out the first aid digester at our treatment plant. The amount is two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-six cents, and this is a budgeted item.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. B, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council, about a month ago, we replaced the first section of the suction tube on our Vector truck. We got that in, we had to replace it, and the next part of the tube is also corroded, we can't fit them together, so we need to replace this part of the tube as well. The cost from McQueen is three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our mechanics will install this and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, motion for purchase of repair parts, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. C.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from Crysteel for a replacement dump box for dump truck sixty-six zero six-three. This truck, we did replace the engine a year ago, the chassis is in really good shape, the dump box is not as damaged, it's past its repair with rust. So we're asking for council to approve the quote from Crysteel in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents, and we will install the dump box ourselves.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Bayless. Jesse, this is coming with stainless steel corners, the newer box?
The newer box, yes.
All the lighting?
Yep.
Components, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. D.
Mayor Council attaches a quote from Titan Machinery for replacement parts for our dozer. We did one side, the running gear on one side, the other side, we need to do the same thing. The quote is in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-two cents. So once we get this on here, we'll be able to use our dozer. And then for 2024, we will budget in the capital for new tracks for both sites.
Oh, okay, very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Approved by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jesse, our replacement parts, do they have a warranty on them?
I believe they're one year.
One year?
The warranty.
Okay, good, thank you.
I can check on that, though, I'll get back to you.
Thank you, that's fine, thanks.
Very good, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Jesse. Mr. Rowa.
Well, looking for your approval from Becker Arena Products in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one cents for new goal frames, nets, pads, and some rubber flooring, so. It is a budgeted item and it's source well pricing, so it has been publicly bid already, so.
Very good. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Laura, my manager.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I come before you this evening to request the approval for the purchase for the quote from ProControl Technologies in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fourteen cents to install a humidity sensor for the auditorium in lower level. This will address the ongoing moisture issue that literally makes condensate drip from our pipes and ceiling on occasion because of the basement.
Very good, hearing what Ms. Collingman had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Supported by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. So first one we're looking at is Hibbing Public Utilities Commission. One vacancy completing a three-year term ending three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, one vacancy completing a three-year term ending three thirty-one, twenty-six.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Julie Sandstein for that position.
Very good.
Which one? Are we doing the 2025 first, or?
I would think we'd do the 23-year term ending 3/31/25 first.
Support.
Support? So we have a motion by Council Fossil and support by Councilor Hildebrand to recommend Julie Sandsteed for the 3/31/2025 three-year term ending. Any other, do we go to any other nominations right now at this time?
Typically, Mayor, I think you do for that particular position, is there anyone else that the council would like to nominate for that particular position?
Okay, or any other nominations for the term ending 3/31/2025?
I'll nominate Chris Andrea.
We have a nomination for Chris Andrea from Councilor Schweber. Second?
I'll support that.
Support by Councilor Whitney. All in, we have two now for 3/31/2025. Any other nominations?
I just want to be clear.
Yes.
We're only doing for the one position right now, correct? We're going to go through the whole process for the other?
For the second commission.
That's right, Councilor Bayless, I need you to open up for the second one.
Yeah. Okay, so I would assume we'd go to vote of?
The first one, yes. You'd vote on the first one, nominating the Sandsteed?
Yes. So we have a nomination for Julie Sandsteed. Is it a verbal?
I think it depends on the vote, if it's close, then you maybe want to go to a roll call, but otherwise, just take a voice vote.
Okay. So all in favor? Would it be all in favor, or? All in favor for Julie Sandsteed for the three-year term ending 3/31/2025? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe it's carried five to two.
Five to two. Okay, we'll now move on to the vacancy completing a three-year term ending 3/31/2026. Nominations from the, yes?
Make a nomination for Jeffrey Stokes.
We have nomination for Jeff Stokes.
Support.
And we have support by Councilor Schweber. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Andrea.
Okay, we have a nomination of Chris Andrea by Councilor Hildebrand. Support. I'll support Chris. So we have a support. Any other nominations? We'll mention the vacancy for 3/31/2026, or Jeff Stokes first? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh. Aye.
Did we say opposed?
What? Us both, is it?
Both, and I would be opposed to.
I think about.
But it's a four-three vote.
Was it a four-three vote? Otherwise, I'd suggest you take a roll call just to make sure.
Yeah. In favor?
In favor.
Okay. In favor.
Favor. I'm opposed.
In favor?
Yep.
Oppose.
Opposed. So if I, did you say support?
No.
Opposed, okay, so if I, four-three?
Yep.
Jeff Stokes?
Is the new commissioner, along with Julie Sandsteed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. I know that Councilor Bayless represents the council on the PUC Commission, do we need to vote on him like we have for the other councillors that reside on like the HEITA board? Do we need to do anything formally to make sure that James is on there?
I'm just going to refer to Ms. Cipola with respect to his term, because I think his term is directly tied to usually his post.
That's correct. That's correct, councillors and mayor, he will, Councilor Bayless will be on through the end of his term right now, which will be the end of 2020.
Unless the council chooses that you don't want me on here, I mean, that's obviously part of the equation. If it were to be that you didn't want me on the commission, could vote on it and remove me.
Very good.
I'm not doing that.
James, you've kept us very updated and very in tune with everything going on. I appreciate your service on that board and the communication aspect that you brought back to our councils.
Thank you. Mayor, I did want to say one thing, just because we have Mr. Garrity's name on here, I do want to say thank you to Pat. He's been fairly instrumental down there, and I know he was at the city here too for a long time, but he's been really good with our contract down there with Minnesota Power, and he's been a valuable wealth of knowledge for us, so I just want to say thank you to Pat publicly, and hopefully he sticks around and shares his wisdom with us a little longer, so.
Right.
Very good, thank you.
And Chris Andrea for his service as well.
Absolutely.
And everyone who applied.
We've had good nominations, we've had good people, and.
Mayor?
Yes?
Like, I just wanted to say, like, I have, I'm sure Julie and Mr. Stokes will do fine, I have nothing personal why I voted, no, I just, I wanted Chris to have another run, I thought.
Yeah.
He was doing a good job.
Chris has been great.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why, you know, I voted and supported that too. But I knew Jeff was good, I knew, you know, I knew we had good candidates, and that's a good problem to have, as tough as it is to make that decision.
We had a good pool of people, for sure.
So again, congratulations to Ms. Sandsteed and Mr. Stokes, and we're looking forward to have them work at PUC and of course with our councils, so. Okay, we will move on then to Chisholm, Hibbing Airport Authority, and one vacancy for three-year term ending 12/31/2026 for a Hibbing resident. We have two applicants, Don Hiligas Senior and Ed Latendras. Don had reached out to me, I know he's had numerous planes, so I will nominate Don. For the airport commission, I think we've got two great candidates, but we can only put one out.
I will second that.
Okay, second by Fossil.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ed Latendras.
Very good. We have a nomination by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman for Mr. Latendras.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Okay, we have two, and we have support for both, so we'll go to a vote, all in favor of Mr. Hiligas, say aye.
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 That's three, okay. Correct? Jay, you said aye?
Yes. I didn't say aye.
All right, opposed, say nay.
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 Okay. We want to do a roll call just for clarification?
Well, I think so.
I think it's true.
I think you suggested do a voice vote, I couldn't track that one.
So we'll go for Mr. Hiligas, Jamie?
I'm opposed.
Opposed, Mr. Fossil?
Four.
Mr. Schweber? Okay, Mr. Schweber is opposed, I am for. Ms. Hoffman?
Opposed.
Opposed. Mr. Whitney?
Four.
Four, okay.
Opposed.
Support?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. All right, so that's three, four against, and three-four, so we go to Mr. Latendras. We have a nomination. So we'll start with Jamie?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, Fossil. Mr. Schweber?
Favor.
In favor. Well, it's going to go that route, I mean, Ed's a great guy, I will, I'll go in favor of Ed, no?
In favor.
In favor.
Yes.
Yes. Whitney?
And in favor.
Okay. Very good. Well, Mr. Latendras, then, we'll move on to the airport authority.
Nice to see good applicants for these boards.
We've had great applicants for both boards, I hope we continue with that moving forward as we fill these boards, and, so you will reach out to them, Candy?
I definitely will.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to license and permits. Number one, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing-Chisholm Soccer Club to hold their raffle on Thursday, October 5th, 2023 at Cheever Field. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Two, approve the transit merchant application request of Elizabeth Libby Devere of Northern Lights Ice LLC. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Ooh, I'm going to give it to Jennifer, I'm going to give it to Hoffman-Sockman, Councilor, with a quick draw there. So we have support, any discussion? Wishes of the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the raffle permit application request of Runamuck ATV Club to hold their raffle at Toivo's Pub on Saturday, September 9th, 2023. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number four, approve the special event permit application request of the Hibbing, City of Hibbing to hold the Halloween 5K Sweet Treats on Saturday, October 28th, 2023, starting and finishing at the Memorial Building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.